Okay, thank you for everybody showing up for our Village of Weberville Council meeting. It is December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at six oh three P M. Roll call Jessica Kooch.
Sholby.
Here.
Sholber.
Here.
Stanfield.
Here.
Walter.
Here.
Hitchcock.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion here for approval agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, but I would also like to add to number two to discuss the raise of Ryan.
So that on this agenda, do you want to add it to it?
Yes, I would like to add it to this.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'm second.
Hey, roll call please.
Yes.
Sholber.
Yes.
Hitchcock.
Yes.
Walter.
Here.
Hitchcock.
Yes. Okay. Any public comment at this time before we get into a meeting? If you have any questions, bring your hand up. Yeah, okay. All right, because the minutes of the council meeting, they would get chancellor December twelfth, council payable, revenue and expense report, and the bail issue.
On accounts payable for road striping, was that for the northern half of Main Street?
In front of the school.
In front of the school.
Yeah, I'll prompt right over to the school.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure that that was, and they just did that?
Well, they got it, yeah. Well, they did it before school started.
Okay.
Right in there. Might have been the school already started, maybe. But the other part that we talked about, what? It's Friday before school started. Friday before the school started.
Okay, so we're paying for work that was done two months ago.
Yes.
Okay. I thought maybe we striked something.
And then Sebastian, I think we're still holding back a thousand bucks in case if the grass doesn't grow for that.
Okay.
No, but the other stripping, they said they wouldn't do it until spring.
Right.
So I'm hoping with that one.
That's what I think.
I did get voted for that, but not till spring. So I was like, well, Brad, I'm just going to give this to you and you decide what to do with it.
Okay, so I recommend the council approve our consent agenda as presented. So move.
Second.
Second way one, roll call Jessica Kooch.
Sholby.
Yes.
Sholber.
Yes.
Stanfield.
Yes.
Walter.
Yes.
Hitchcock.
Yes. Attorney, just a few minutes late, engineering course, do we have anything with you, Shane? No, nothing?
No.
I have a good course. Okay. So at this point, I would allow Mr. Sheriff Scott Littleworth to assess us his contract for three years for us.
Thanks for having me here, council, I appreciate it. If you would indulge me for just a couple of minutes, I think it's important to speak briefly on the chronology of how we got where we're at today. Um, so we've been servicing through a contract, law enforcement contract, through the sheriff's office, the Village of Weberville since nineteen ninety-four. This current contract that we're in is set to expire the end of this year. In twenty twenty-one, we supplied eighty hours to the village. In twenty twenty-two, we supplied eighty hours a week to the village and law enforcement services. Uh, late in twenty twenty-two, I came to the village and asked for the contract to be amended from eighty hours to forty hours, which you, the board unanimously approved on November twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-two. And the reason I did that, if you remember, is twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three were very, very difficult years for us with respect to retirements. I think we had over twenty retirees spending the two years, and we had to hire, we had significant vacancies. We knew we were going to be in that position, so that's why I asked for twenty twenty-three to go from eighty to forty. You guys agreed to do that, which I very much appreciate. When I did that, I also promised that if we got to a position where we could supply eighty hours of police service back to the village, I would come back to the council and say, hey, we're in a better position. If you want to go back from forty to eighty, I think we can do it. That's exactly what we did, um, earlier this year. As a matter of fact, in the middle of twenty twenty-three, we, me and my command staff met, and they thought we were in a position where we could do this. We then reapproached, uh, Brad and inquired if the village would want to go back from forty to eighty. Um, we proposed a new agreement, two-year agreement, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, with an option for a third year, and we started working on it. It's important to note that in the current contract, it actually has a stipulation in there that says if the village wanted to continue to contract with the sheriff's office, you would need to have financials by, uh, August thirtieth, August thirtieth of the end of the contract year, which is now, which we had to you, um, back in July. So back in July, the undersheriff contacted President Hitchcock with the new proposal, three years, eighty hours, uh, and with the financials, which again, we complied with eight thirty, uh, deadline in the current contract. Uh, once he said, uh, Brad said that the board, the board would be amicable to that, we then went with the controller's office, had them supply our financials or their financials to us with what it would cost. Um, that was a five percent increase across the board with eighty hours of service. We provided the new agreement, details of the financials to the village for the eighty hours of service, two deputies. Um, back on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three, the village approved unanimously the eighty-hour contract through twenty twenty-six and the financials associated with that contract. Um, in October, we crafted a resolution memo to the board of commissioners. This had, this contract had to work its way through our different commissions through the county, which it did, um, and it passed in November. Uh, we then met as a command staff again to make sure we were good to go with this. We were. And then back on December seventh, when the undersheriff drove to the village, met with Jessica to have this agreement signed, is when we were notified that the board, the village council, decided that they may want to go in a different direction. They wanted a one-year contract and wanted to talk about a potential reduction in cost. Well, and then I found out actually today that on twelve-twelve, your last meeting, the council approved President Hitchcock to sign a one-year agreement not to exceed three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Well, there's no one-year contract. It's never been proposed, there's no one-year contract in writing. That's not, that's never been how we're going to proceed forward. So there's no way we can turn around a one-year contract in twelve days. It's just simply not possible. And that was never the discussions we had with the board. As a matter of fact, we weren't even in, I think Chris was here last week on Tuesday, but we weren't made aware that this would even pass the board. So, um, you know, I simply can't provide contract and law enforcement services to the village without a, without a signed contract. And the contract that we've been talking about was three years with the financials that were incorporated in the contract. So, you know, I will say this, the proposed new contract that you guys passed last week, a one-year contract that simply doesn't exist, would do two things, guaranteed would do two things. Number one, it would create more time on the backend for us and for you to create that, to run it through the council, run it through the committees and the, uh, the county board, to have our legal look at it. All of those things would have to happen once again, which we've already done on the three-year contract. And it would guarantee that the cost of police services in the village would go up. Because this is a three-year, three-year contract with projected financials that we just simply, for those three years, will bill out to the village. We don't go back every single year and redo the numbers, right? Next year is a contract year for our, um, law enforcement services contract. So we'll be in negotiations for the next several years, um, with respect to that. Well, next year for, to renew the contract with our CCLP law enforcement contract, and nothing's getting any cheaper. Uh, the services of the county's not going to get any cheaper, our people aren't going to get any cheaper, cars aren't going to get any cheaper, gas isn't getting any cheaper. So if you want to go to a one-year contract, which again, doesn't exist, it's simply going to increase the cost to the constituents you serve. So this is what I think we should do. Or this, go.
So what you're saying is, if we go with a three-year contract and with a five percent increase over each of those three years. If we went with a one-year contract, you're saying the increase would be even more?
Yeah, we'd have to start negotiating next year, and whether or not we've settled the contract with our law enforcement services by then, and talking with the controller's office, everything's getting more expensive. So these are projections again, and if we're renegotiating a contract every single year, it's a guarantee that your costs are going to go up.
Okay, and but for these three years, it would be a locked five percent?
Correct.
Interest.
Correct. The other thing I will say is make, I want to reiterate that there's a hundred and eighty-day out clause in the contract. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. So I understand what you're saying with the finances.
Yeah.
I totally get that. My question comes on, I'm looking at the ten-hour shifts, and I understand you do have to have some kind of overlap because the officers have to talk. I totally respect that. But is there any way that we don't have to have that, the ten hours that we can cut it down some so that we can have the seven days a week coverage?
Well, we can look at how we're going to cover the township if we can cover it seven days a week. I know the second deputy that's scheduled to come up here wants to primarily work weekends and maybe like an afternoon hybrid shift. And right now, you know Deputy Hagerman's spending most of his time on day shift working at the schools. So how we staff and cover the township is certainly things that we can talk about, but right now, we need to focus on forty versus eighty hours, um, of police service. And this is what I suggest the board does. Even though you passed last, you know, last Tuesday, um, I guess allowing Brad to sign a one-year agreement, there is no such thing. But I think the board should do is pass the three-year contract, and then the middle of next year, if you, you wanted to go back down from eighty to forty because of cost or because of service or whatever the case may be, then we can simply cut this contract in half starting in twenty twenty-five and then just go back down from eighty to forty. But we can't be in the business of renegotiating this every year. It's too much work on our end, number one, and it's going to be too costly for you guys, number two. That's just, that's just bad.
Yeah, and that's where I'll speak up and say that I was the one that proposed the one-year. Because I fully understand that there needs to be a contract in place for any resemblance of the current agreement to continue into next year. And looking at it of, in terms of, well, if we could just look at, you know, one year short-term, and then in the interim, have those discussions about possibly restructuring the contract in terms of price or coverage or however that would make.
Well, we wouldn't be able to start negotiating as far as price because we just can't, I mean, we're either going to go with this contract or not go with this contract. But what we can, what we can discuss, if you wanted to, just like we did in twenty twenty-two, if you wanted to reduce the number of hours, but we, I can't go to the controller's office and say they want to reduce from five percent to three percent. They're going to say that's, it's going to cost the county money, we're not going to do that, the cost is the cost. And we don't come up with these numbers, we get it from the controller's office. These aren't sheriff's office necessarily.
So then why is the contract that In County Sheriff has in place with Delhi for eighteen and a half officers, their annual increase over the next three years is only three percent, but ours is five?
Because we just, we signed that two years ago. And, uh, they did a, I think they did a four-year, four-year with a one-year, just timing-wise. They went with a longer contract, and I think they did that strategically, strategically looking forward, knowing that if we can ink something now, it's likely going to save us a little bit of money down the road with respect to increasing costs.
For sure. Understood. And that's where, you know, obviously, I'm sure the structure of the contract are similar, but they're different townships that have different requirements, and, you know, there's just a bunch of different variables. Um, but when I look at the Village of Weberville in terms of the tax burden on the taxpayers here, uh, and I'm, I'm sure that, uh, the people employed by the county don't necessarily see it this way, but for the proposed contract, on an individual basis, it would cost each taxpayer roughly two hundred and sixty dollars a year. I understand there's different levels of, you know, taxes that are paid. Versus the Delhi contract, people are paying only a hundred and twenty dollars per person. So that's an incredible amount of financial burden on the individual taxpayer here in Weberville for similar services. On top of the fact that, and I can say this as a taxpayer in In County in the Village of Weberville, my tax dollars are already going to the county for county share of services. So I feel as though I'm paying twice. And I understand that these contracts, to have your deputies assigned to a specific outpost or location is, it's not a no-cost operation. Not saying that it should be free, but I'm just trying to understand where these numbers come from so that as somebody on this board who's entrusted to make financial decisions for the taxpayers, I know exactly where these dollars are going towards and how these numbers are figured. That, that's the way I'm approaching this.
It got approved back in September.
In what context? I don't think anyone was selling it.
The board approved it. You approved a three-year contract with the financials back in September.
We didn't have the exact number. We didn't have an exact number, but we did, I know exactly what you're talking about.
We approved that we wanted to move forward, going back to eighty hours, but we didn't have a contract that I signed. No.
Well, those are strictly decisions, um, that you guys need to make with respect to, I mean, I can't get into comparing how much Delhi is paying for police services versus Weberville. I mean, I live in Delhi and I pay a whole boatload of taxes in Delhi. So maybe, maybe the pot of taxes that they pay in Delhi divided by, uh, the amount of residents makes it cheaper for a deputy to be up in Delhi compared to how expensive it is in Weberville. All those calculations I don't have on me. But suffice it to say, you know, being an incorporated village, you have to provide some police service to the residents, either by having your own police department, contracting with the sheriff, contracting with another police department. And, uh, this is our cost, which it'll cost the county. We don't make any money on this. This is cost. It's what it costs the county to provide service up here. I don't make any money on this. All this work we've done on this contract is rolled into the contract. I don't bill you for the undersheriff's hours, I don't bill you for the controller's hours, I don't bill you for corporate council's hours to review the contract. Uh, you don't go uncovered when there's nobody up here. We have other deputies that aren't contracted by you. I was just telling Brad I was up here a week and a half ago, in the middle of the day for about forty-five minutes. Um, it's not much, but it's something. So we simply can't, there's no way to turn around a one-year contract. The only way to really adjust this contract is by the number, the amount of hours because the cost is the cost.
And I, and I understand and appreciate that, but I'd also like you to understand the position that I'm in as somebody who's entrusted to be on this board, that in any other circumstances involving taxpayer money, if we were to try to fix a road and somebody were to bring me a contract that doesn't spell out exactly how many feet of asphalt, how many feet of pipe, and how much labor costs are, it'd be essentially viewed as a no-bid contract, and we didn't do our due diligence to make sure that the taxpayers are getting the best value. I understand in this circumstance that your prices are somewhat fixed, but without having any transparency or visibility as to how these figures are created, it's hard for me to feel good about voting on that.
So how do we proceed?
Well, these are all the questions we have. So anybody has for Scott? We're done, then we can go down.
Is there anybody else?
Scott's fine line. I just did a little math here, but for twenty twenty-four, it's like eighty-two dollars and fifty-five cents an hour when the guys are up here, so for eighty hours, so I know I'm blind signing, yeah, but I mean, and it only goes up ten dollars an hour for twenty twenty-six. To me for.
So there's all kinds of things that go when you're running a police department outside.
That's good.
While you're asking the question, I'm going to try to answer. That go into running a police department or supplying law enforcement services outside of the police officer, all their equipment, and the cop, right? We got to play, pay licenses for our axon body cameras and evidence storage. We got to, we got to have our SRMS, where we, our records management system, we have to pay licenses per deputy on that. Our guardian tracking, our H R system, we pay for individual, our individual license on that. Cleaning, uniform supplies, training, uniform, gas, grease, equipment, vehicles, employee training, um, all of that stuff goes into the cost of a deputy. Again, we, we, the sheriff's office, don't come up with these costs. We go to the controller's office, who does the financials for the county through the board, and we say, what does a deputy cost the sheriff's office each and every year? And that, those are the numbers that they give us. They project out years if we want it for your contract, and those are the numbers we go, that we go. And I don't know how else to explain it. Now, if, if, if somebody on the board wants to go direct with the controller's office and get into the nitty-gritty of all of this stuff, I suppose you can do that, but the end of the contract is twelve days from now. And we started talking about this back in July.
Scott, I know you come in late, thank you for coming, but, um, just, we're just working on this. We did have three said yes on the one year and two said no. You agree with that, Sam? Right? Okay, so we can go forward and reverse that, or we can make another motion on the table with two saying no and three said yes last Tuesday, correct?
Yes.
So if everybody said yes, we'd have to come up with some type of resolution or something and switch it. But because two said no, three said yes, it passed. But now I can recommend to the council to accept this three-year contract and see if they'll vote on it and get it to pass. It shouldn't, it should just, do we have to discontinue the first one first before we make a new recommendation?
Uh, oh, you're saying to effectively dissolve the first one-year contract?
Yeah, because three said yes, two said no. But now we're here, we're, that's not acceptable. So to get police enforcement for January first, we need to go in front of the council again and ask for reconsideration to look at this again and vote one more time to see if we can get it passed to have our three-year contract.
I have here in my notes, just FYI, that the financials were given to the village back in, excuse me, in August.
I swear I said August.
Okay. So you've had that, you've had the financials since August. You didn't just get them a couple of weeks ago.
I don't think anybody got a packet, you got it at the office of August. In August, it was in our packet. Okay, so, once again, so to proceed, I want to make sure Rob, this rule's correct, but so we don't have to, we didn't want, if we got it, so the three-year approved, do we have to go back and disapprove the one that had three yeses and two nos?
Well, if the, if the motion would be, uh, effectively to take on the three-year contract, ultimately dissolving the one-year contract, this is the layout, I understand it to be, I think the vote could just take place on that premise by itself.
Right.
So council all agree, we're trying to say, so that's why sometimes when we all say yes, it creates more of a.
Do you have one more question?
Sure.
You have, uh, remove all deputy sheriffs for emergencies? Um, if it's something like that little boy of Lansing that was lost that you all had, I'm all for that.
What are you talking about, ma'am?
Um, section thirteen, page three of five.
Good.
Says remove all deputy sheriffs for emergencies?
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be priority backup, that kind of stuff, somebody in Williamson calling for priority backup, that kind of things, or fatal accident up on the highway, we're rendering life-saving efforts, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
We would rarely pull the Weberville deputy to go to look for the little boy without, in another county. I'm saying it never happened, but that'd be pretty.
Doesn't Chris do the, doesn't he?
Got a team?
Yeah. So he did go.
So, okay, that's fair, that's fair, yeah. And in that instance, that, yeah, when you're part of a special team, that could like to happen.
Like I said, I, you know, no worries with that. It was just, you know, would they had, say they needed him in Williamson or, you know, Hoakamas or whatever, that he would be pulled from Weberville to go there?
Conversely, we would have all kinds of resources come to Weberville, like we did when the tornado hit, um, that we simply don't bill out. It's just a mutual aid thing that we all help each other get through major instances, and those are two perfect examples of, some people came here and some of our people went away.
Okay. Okay.
And again, don't forget, there's a, there's a six-month out. So again, the middle in twenty twenty-four, if the village decides to go a different direction or want to cut this from eighty to forty, that's when we need to start talking about that, and then we could implement that in twenty twenty-five, if that's what you choose. But as far as the financials of this agreement, we're not going to keep opening and reopening and doing that kind of back and forth. I mean, the contract's got to be the contract with respect to financials, and I can tell you it's not going to get any cheaper, it just isn't.
Can you help me understand a little bit more, at least on page two, section two C? It says in the event deputy sheriff assigned to the village are reassigned by the sheriff for work detail outside the village cannot emerge of the issues. Can you help me understand what the term reassigned means? Would that include things like training? Or would that be if you say kind of an event in East Lansing, you said, hey, like I'm short, guys, and I got to reassign your deputy for a day?
We're on page two, where? Oh, up top.
Page two, section C, yeah.
Yeah, that would be, um, for, for a significant amount of time.
Okay.
Um, not spending a vacation day, or we had, we've got in-service training coming up, so Chris will spend a day, um, at the sheriff's office doing CPR training and all the stuff that's mandated by us by the state. Um, that, that cost is also rolled into the contract because that's just going to allow him to do his job when we're back here. What we can't get into the habit of doing is if Chris is out of the township for an hour, then we owe you an hour, and we have to pull somebody from courts to come up here. All of that stuff over the course of the year is going to wash.
But we would have coverage.
Not necessarily. I mean, we would have county coverage, but we're not going to supplant the hour or two or the day that Chris is gone, um, with a deputy from the county or a deputy from some other place in our statutory, required to cover. It's just going to become too complicated.
Okay, but if a deputy is needed, a deputy.
Oh, sure. Yeah, we're a twenty-four-seven sheriff's office, and when something major goes down in Weberville, it's way, we will send the cavalry, and that's not, not something that we bill the village with either. So over the course of the year, it's really going to be a wash as far as cost and hours and that kind of stuff. Like I said, I was just up here, I don't know how many deputies we had up here for how many hours when the tornado hit. Um, I was here all night, basically, um, and better part of the next day. So again, over the course of the year, that's pretty much going to be a wash and, um.
Well, for those instances where you say it's an hour and a half a day, my understanding is that that time is then made up by other out-county deputies passing through or.
Sure.
So that way, there's still forty hours of presence in the village.
Yeah, but we don't, again, over the course of the year, yes, but we don't keep track of, hey, Chris, you just went to court for an hour at Fifty-Fifth for a ticket you rode in Weberville, now we owe the village an hour because you were gone. We just can't get into that, it's going to be way too complicated.
Jessica.
Um, I know we had the problem before, so I think Dan brought it up, is when Chris was on vacation, it was no, besides out-county, there was no police coverage during that time? Is that still the case with this contract?
That would be my expectation, yes. And again, over the course of the year, that's for the most, are going to be a wash.
Yes, Dan.
I'm kind of hard of hearing. Did I hear you correctly when you guaranteed eighty hours of coverage, but you cannot guarantee seven days a week? Is that what you said?
No, I didn't say I cannot. I just said as far as staffing the township, that's something we can talk about going forward.
Shouldn't, shouldn't the number of days of coverage per week be in the contract if the hours per week are in the contract?
Uh, it's by hours, I don't necessarily remember, uh, seven days a week, fifty-two weeks a year being in the contract.
I understand that.
Okay.
Shouldn't it be in the contract? If you're going to guarantee eighty hours a week, shouldn't there be a guarantee of the number of days?
So the way it's.
I mean, are we going to have two deputies, four days a week, two ten-hour shifts?
No.
And that's it?
Sir, we would strategically try to have as many days as possible covered up here, but I can't guarantee it, there's going to be three hundred and sixty-five day coverage with this contract. but I can't guarantee it, there's gonna be three hundred and sixty-five day coverage with this contract.
How are you gonna break your eight hour, or your, or your, uh, eighty hours per week down then?
To be determined.
Wow. That, that doesn't make any sense.
Why?
If we're paying for a service and it's under a contract, shouldn't that service be spelled out in the contract?
Sir, this, this contract has been talked about since July.
I've been asking since January to get Deputy Hagerman's hours.
Okay.
The hours that he turns in every month is short.
Could be, because he could be in training, maybe he took a day off.
Shouldn't he write that down on his hourly? Most of
Well, he wouldn't write
On average, he has gone from either being fifty-one hours short for the month, all the way up to a hundred and one hours short for the month on the sheets that he turns in. And now they've changed the sheets so that the hours that he documents, most of them are hours outside the village. And if we're paying for coverage inside the village, shouldn't it be down on paper what he actually did in the village for that specific number of hours of his shift?
That would be on his daily that he would keep.
But it's not.
Well, I, I haven't looked at
It's not. I've asked him about that. I've asked, uh, who was it? Uh, Captain Danger?
Yep.
I asked him about it. And I got the same answer from both of them. If you want to see his hours, do it for you to request.
All, all I, all I can say to you, sir, is yes. It sounds like you're not happy with the services you're getting through this
Oh, I'm, I'm ecstatic with the service. I just want to see that we're getting what we're paying for.
Well, it, it, it sounds like you don't think you are. Um, I, I don't know how to answer that. Chris is up here, he's assigned to the village, this is where he comes to work every day.
Right, that's supposed to put in
Well, you didn't let, you didn't let him finish, so, um, any other questions?
This is awesome. Um, it does say in the contract too that, that when, um, like Officer Hagerman responds to, um, like Lock Township, Leroy Township, Winston, um, you guys keep track of that time and then you discount it back to the village, right? Doesn't matter what that, if
Well, I, I addressed that earlier. What, what we can't get into the habit of doing is every time Chris goes to back up another officer for fifteen minutes, then we have to keep a rolling log of how much time we owe the village, because again, over the course of the year, that's gonna be a wash. And when we do have big things happen in the village, I mean, I can't tell you how many hours Kelly Bowden spent on the investigation that we had last year. It was hundreds of hours. Um, so all that being said, all of that stuff over the course of the year, when you're talking forty hours or eighty hours, for the most part, is gonna be a wash. And if he's got training at the sheriff's office to be able to do his job up here, I, I think the village should incorporate that into the services that they're contracting us to get up here.
Okay. Um, does it not say that in the contract?
Well, and that's, I think the section you're probably referring to is two C, which I asked about in, in the event that the deputy sheriffs assigned to the village are reassigned for non-emergency issues.
Okay, so that's what you're saying, okay.
Yeah. But I think reassignment, as now I understand it for your explanation
It'd be long-term.
Yeah, long-term.
Now, do you guys, um, so if you guys do, just because I heard the captain say this, and I had to clarify this, just, you know, basically to be on the record on this. Um, he kept saying detective services is part of the contract, but like, for, so for instance, is Williamson under a contract for your guys' detective services?
No.
Okay, but you guys, isn't that part of the county taxes is what pays for those services, correct?
Sure.
Okay.
Some of the allied township taxes go towards police service as well.
Right.
On top of the contract that they enter with us to give them eighteen and a half deputies.
Right. Now, did the, um, controller put any weight on, maybe they did, because obviously their numbers keep on, that's what they do. Um, because obviously, having police, uh, presence at far east part of the county is a huge benefit for the sheriff's department, correct?
It helps, sure.
Because obviously, you have, again, you have Lock Township, Leroy, Stop, Williamson, that has an officer within, you know, you know, ten minutes of, of
But I'll say this, unless that's a major priority,
Yeah.
the deputy assigned to Webberville would not be sent to that call.
Okay.
It would be an out-county person that may become a commodity.
Okay.
That's gonna go to Lock Top, Rock Township to take that report or deal with that crash or whatever the case were.
Okay.
Anybody else have any more questions for our sheriff? Scott Lewis?
I just, I just know that, you know, the people have come to us, it's really important to them, and I think to us, to the council, that we keep our village and the people in it safe. I think that we need to all think about that. We need to think of a way that we can become united in doing that, because the village and the people are, are number one priority, as well as the students also. And if we can come up a way, with a way to do the seven days coverage, I think that that is also very important to this village.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm all for it if we can get a seven-day coverage.
Can't guarantee it, but I'll try our best. We'll try our best. And I think with the two deputies we have targeted to be assigned up here, Chris focusing on the schools, I know the other deputy due to some other things he's got in his life going on, he wants to work primarily, work weekends and a little bit of an afternoon shift, so it's kind of the best of both worlds with respect to as much coverage as we can get up here with very little overlap between deputy A and deputy B.
I appreciate that, and that'd be nice.
Thank you for that.
And nobody here, including myself, is saying that we don't want the county sheriff here. If we could have a hundred and sixty hours, we'd love that, but I'm looking at this
I can't give you it, sir.
No, 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 no.
I'm really surprised I can give you eighty, frankly. I did not think I'd be back in front of you and offer it an eighty, but you got there somehow.
And we're grateful for it.
But, you know, from a financial perspective, with these five percent increases, I mean, we're spending eighteen percent of the village's annual operating budget on police services, and when I look at our financials, it's not sustainable. Unless God forbid taxes get raised, or we find other sources of revenue to offset those costs. But I, I don't disagree. It's something the village needs, and that, that we as a council need to be keeping an eye out for where we can save money.
When we start talking about this again, middle of twenty twenty-six, be ready.
Be ready.
I mean, everything's getting more expensive. I don't know how we thought.
Scott, you have a question? The village of Warrville is incorporated, correct?
Yes.
When it's incorporated, it has, one of the things that was brought to my attention was, you have to have police enforcement, where other towns might not be incorporated, so they don't have to have.
Mm-hmm.
So this town, no matter what, has to have a police enforcement that's incorporated. Because like Dansville, as an example, right? Josh Rocky lived there for years, they did not have a police
No.
Okay, so I want the council to know that you're incorporated, so you're January one, you didn't have anybody, you were in trouble because you gotta, you gotta have some type of enforcement for your town. There's not any more questions?
Yeah, just, just quick questions, it's just kind of stupid, so you can entertain your, or something a little stupid. Um, is there any way on the cop car, we could actually get like a Webberville post or something like that?
Yeah, that'd be pretty easy. We can get, we used to have metallic signs that say like, seat up enforcement, or I know when, um, Poland, uh, basketball state championship, they got some metallic state champions in basketball, so we could do Webberville, the Village of Webberville or something, I don't
I just think that would be, I just think that'd be really cool, but I think it also could show to the residents, one that'd see the car around, they'd know it's our officer.
Yeah.
And then when they saw you're out-county, they would know it's out-county, so it'd kind of give them, you know, a sense of who's who and kind of actually help them, you know, understand what, you know, what's going on.
Yeah, and it's very likely there's gonna be much overlap between the two deputies if you guys decide to go with the eighty, because we don't plan to assign two cars up here. Well, there's only gonna be one, there's, there'll only be one car assigned to Webberville and the two deputies
Chris loves the bike. Chris loves the bike.
He loves the bike.
Maybe in the summer.
Maybe not in winter.
And he's on foot a lot in the school too.
Yeah.
So his car parks here, which is a turn as well, but
Right, is there any way that we can maybe recover some of the costs from one of their township?
That, that would be nice, but we've done that, since we've done the contract with the sheriff, the three-way township option. We don't want to contribute. Okay, well, I think we got it, so everybody's questions are answered. So here on December nineteen
Yeah, I was saying
On December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, I, the president of Village Warrville, would like the council to, with my, uh, request to you people, approval of the twenty twenty-four, of three hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-five. The twenty twenty-five will be three hundred and sixty thousand, five sixty-five, and twenty twenty-six will be seventy three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five ninety-three. Recommend to the council that we approve this contract as presented in front of us from the Angam County Board of Commissioners.
I'll move. Can I make one correction? I think
Yes.
Uh, it's five ninety-seven, not to split hairs, but just so the minutes reflect the contract, twenty twenty-six, three seventy-eight, five ninety-seven is what I have on my
Okay, I've got five ninety-three on mine.
Oh, you do?
I have five ninety-three, yeah.
It's a typo on the, oh, it's a typo on the board page, so on the actual contract, you're correct. That's my mistake.
So we're okay with two seventy-eight, five ninety-three?
Mm-hmm.
Correct, Mr. Williamsburg?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so, so will, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by one, any discussion? See you none, we'll call this.
Sure.
Yes.
Sugar? Yes. Samuel?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Fitz?
Yes.
Thank you. I don't have the original with me tonight, but I'll make sure the undersheriff comes up. Oh, do you have it? Oh. You guys want to sign it?
Ready? Come on up here.
And thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Thank you for taking the time.
No problem. Always good to be up here in front of you. Appreciate what you guys do. Being an elected official is not easy, that's for sure.
Oh, it's just good.
Yeah, I'll give them, there's two copies. All right.
It's twelve, not nineteen, twenty-three.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, sometimes it's like the time
We'll look forward to continuing to serve the Village of Webberville, the police services, the best we can.
Love you guys. Appreciate it.
Good to see you, buddy. You too, happy holidays.
Thanks.
Merry Christmas.
You're welcome.
I know it's something else. So Scott, what is your first time on the agenda? Any more news for the end of the year of anybody paying the dollars or anything like that?
Hey, didn't know this.
A week?
Uh.
Somebody supposed to pay?
Yes, well, for the money that was
The rest of the two halls.
Uh, no, I, I still have not received a phone call back from, uh, probation department with, uh, Angam County. Um, I guess I could write a letter to them and ask them to request, but, uh, the only real update I have is the four twenty-five agreement went through swimmingly last week, uh, no objection, no question, uh, Robert's name?
Sorry to interrupt, but that copy you kept has a signature for the board chair on it? I think if you fully execute it, it's gonna have to have the board chair signature, and then I'll have the, gets the original back. Does that work?
Yes.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so Robert's name probably been received?
Oh, it is, yeah, and they're just, they're mailing out the resolution, so I should be receiving.
This is all on date callers property. It took like weeks, hours, time, maybe, no permission, agriculture to build houses out back to agriculture.
That's right.
It's just, wow, just can't believe it. Um, the next question I had was, um, does anybody know what's going on with Jay Rittman's car that's already completely sold, or who knows, or?
I have not heard anything. I've checked, uh, Angam Reg, uh, Angam County Register of Deeds to see if there's been any movements with deeds, buy and sell, and I have not seen anything. Um, nothing compared to that sale that's taken place, so. And I can check before I leave here, but as of last week, there was still not an opinion rendered as to the white rose appeal.
So was any action taken with Jay Rittman's property in regards to red tagging the buildings? Because I think what cops do on when their eviction notice is posted, right?
I'd have to double-check with, uh, Jim Wright.
Okay.
Um, last I knew, uh, Jim had the order, uh, he's the guy that actually has the red tags, so to say.
Mm-hmm.
And I did see some email correspondence between him and Hagerman, uh, coordinating, uh, to, to coordinate to put up a red tag, but I don't know if that ever went through.
Okay.
Just taking, no rose. No. All these things you got hanging out, they're not as materialized.
Hmm, other than four twenty-five, that went through.
Did we get any money for the, hitting our wellhouse?
I don't know.
I don't know. So we can't act like that. Did anything work good for the lidoons? Everything all set there with getting their proper help to get all that straightened out? Do, do we get a, a welder guy, any, for, I have not, I have not found anybody got it. So anybody that knows, uh, portable welder machinists that can come to our wellhouse over by the church, we need to cut the pipe off and actually weld it there. The threads are wore out, the fittings wore out, we, we can't repair it anymore, it needs to be
Cast iron? Just, uh, mild steel.
Pipe steel, yeah.
I'm checking somebody, I might know someone.
I might be able to do it.
It's a little fabricated, metabo and a little bit of fabric
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what all these done
Yeah, hang upside down.
I'll check with someone.
The worst.
Let me ask tomorrow.
Yeah, of course.
Reddinger still in color, but
What's his name?
Reddinger?
I'm not sure, I can chat.
He does go out of steelwork, steelworkers and stuff.
I know, him too.
Yeah, that's good.
I'll check with him too.
Okay, it's laying on your back, it's not right there. All right, anything else? How about Mr. Josh Rocky, EDA, we're all good there? How are we on the building? We gotta be able to get a seal up, so it ain't leaking?
Yeah, uh, I've got me with engineer tomorrow, but do all the measurements and do all that stuff, so. So we'll be walking through, and once the engineer gets their plan, they should be able to get the structure fixed fairly fast. And then the roofers are ready to go as soon as that, that's done, so. Hopefully.
Gotcha. Well, thank you, Scott, for popping in here, but I wanted, that was one of my concerns was that we mentioned it last week in our meeting, and then how we're gonna proceed with this one, okay? And that's why sometimes when we all say, all said yes, that we have to go and make a resolution to reverse that, because we all agreed, and then they turn around and back that word up. That's correct, right?
Yeah, and so the, the, the way this one, uh, we just voted on it three-year, it was approved, and it extinguishes the one-year.
Okay.
Yeah.
But if everybody said yes, then we would have come up with a resolution to repair the last one, okay? Sometimes that's why the council, when we have some that you guys feel will let, be honest, not bad to have one person say no. So, well, I appreciate everybody's time. Do I have a
Aren't we going to discuss Ryan's raise?
Wasn't added to the agenda.
I thought she did at the beginning.
It didn't get a second. Um, and I motioned to go forward with It didn't get a second, um, and I motioned to go forward as presented, and that's what was approved.
I thought I seconded.
I didn't.
Nope, I, it was dead silence, and I waited a good thirty seconds.
So if something's on the, if something wants to be added to the agenda, does it have to be, if one person wants to add it, then it has to be seconded and approved, correct?
Correct.
I, I, we waited, I didn't hear you say.
I said second. Why would I lie?
I didn't hear you, so must be my, they just catching up with me, cuz I remember we waited long enough, and then, but at this time, I guess.
Well, what is the record of your flag, what is, what did, did you hear Justin?
We can have Josh Rocky back it up, if they want to.
I would have stopped the live feed, unfortunately.
Either way, the clerk didn't hear a second, I don't know.
Oh. Do I have a recommendation from the council for adjournment in our meeting?
I will be marching to the adjourn.
Second.
Six fifty-three. Give me a minute to take the timer, please.
Roll call, please.
Sholby?
Yes.
Yes, Samuel?
No.
Walter?
No.
Yes.